Good evening. Welcome to the monthly business meeting of the unified government of Athens-Clark County. Thank you for joining us this afternoon. We really appreciate you being here and taking your time and your interest in your government. But before we get too far into the agenda, I think there's something here that everybody's dying to do.
Y'all!
I knew everybody wanted to congratulate them, but I didn't want anybody to get to be first and somebody to get to be last, so, yeah. Their agenda's just to the right of the door as you go out if you want to follow along with us tonight. And for those that are watching remotely, you can get an agenda through athensclarkcounty.com. If you have cell phones, would you please turn them off or to silent? There are five opportunities tonight for public input. The first one will be on our consent agenda, which are items, I'll hear in just a second, talking faster than I can keep up, items two through 11, then old and new business, which are items 12 through 19, and then we have recommendations from our planning commission, which are 20 through 23, and we take those items one at a time. We have the public hearing, then the discussion, and then the vote. And then there's one last opportunity at the end of the meeting for anything that we didn't cover in our regular meeting. Rules of commission allow our citizens three minutes per comment. The timer on Ms. Bratton's desk will be green when you start and turns yellow at two and a half minutes. And I hope you will have your remarks finished before it turns red, so we won't need to interrupt you. If you have handouts that you want to share with us, if you'll give them to Mr. Berryman, he'll be glad to give them to us. And we have some awards that our staff has gotten tonight, and I'm really proud that this happens on a very regular basis. Would Kent Kilpatrick, our interim leisure services director, come forward? And our first award tonight is for the second time the Leisure Services Department has won this prestigious Georgia residential, what's the P for?
Recreation.
Recreation Parks. And this is the second time they've won this, and it's for communities over 50,000, and it's all of northeast Georgia. So will you accept this for your department again?
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations. If you'll stay a minute, because we've got some other leisure services awards up here. And for the second time in four years, District Seven Agency Award, wait a minute, I've got to start over again, the GPRA Marketing and Visibility Section, Linden House was selected for awarding that. And this is for the publication, which is based on visual appeal and creativity. The 28-page publication is full of activities that provide visitors the opportunity to think more deeply about visual art, learn about the artist's life and experience, and visit a gallery, and so, and be more informed about art. It's hard to smile and do all this at the same time and keep it up. So DeeDee, this is for Linden House for you, and congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Y'all do us proud a lot.
Thank you.
And I believe we have another leisure services, and this, we've got some citizens that would like to join us tonight, Linda Chafin, Gary Kreider, Dorothy O'Neil, and Ed and Sue Wildey. And while they're coming up, I'll tell you about this, they are the weed warriors. And I know that these are very prestigious awards, too, but as a citizen, I think this is one of the most prestigious awards that ever is given, because when we have invasive species in our community, they can completely take over. If you've ever had kudzu in your yard or gotten ivy started that you didn't want, you know it can take over in a hurry. And they keep the invasive species out of our parks. And so they are getting an award from the Keep Athens, Keep Georgia Beautiful Foundation and for Community Beautification Award category. And thank you, Sue. And Ed.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you later. So Ms. Bratton, would you call the roll for us, please?
Dickerson?
Here.
Sam?
Here.
Lane?
Here.
Wright?
Present.
Neesmith?
Present.
Hale?
Here.
Aaron?
Here.
Gertz?
Here.
Ambie?
Great. Well, thank you. And I would entertain a motion for approval of a minute since we've got a number of them that need to be approved, October 10th, November 7th, November 14th, November 21st, and November 28th.
Second?
Have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Do you have any written communications, Ms. Bratton? Okay. This is the first opportunity for citizen input tonight, and it's on our consent agenda, which I mentioned to you earlier, was our items two through 11. Item one, that was on the original agenda, we've intentionally flagged because it needs to be dealt with after we deal with one of the zoning items. So that's been moved to the bottom of the agenda, but it will still be acted on tonight. So if anyone wants to speak to, actually, items one through 11, but we've renumbered that one, I think it's 24, Jean? Yeah. And we'll have a public hearing before we do that one separately, anyway. So anyone who would like to speak to items two through 11, this would be the time to come up and let us hear from them. Okay, seeing none, we'll come behind the rails. Any commissioner want to take anything off the consent?
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to take number two off the consent, just for explanation.
Okay.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I don't know whether you wanted to speak to one or not.
Did we overlooks who might want to speak? Mr. Oberon, come on up.
Yes, sir. Eric Crassell, 190 Hickory Point. I'm speaking in favor of the pump track approval, which is a mountain bike speed-time trial recreational measure. Doesn't require any funding from the government, and I understand that competing interests such as the tennis courts and pickleball have also found other places for it. The mountain bike trails, including this trail, are very important to Athens because they bring foreign money into Athens. They bring tourism to Athens, unlike tennis courts or pools or anything like that, that are just used for locals for a speed-loss-driven economy. That's very important. Heavy recreation will be used by many people at once, unlike a tennis court. And so there are other members of SORBA, Southern Off-Road Biking Association, that are here in favor of that, and I'd just like to state my support for that project.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Crassell. Your beard did a job on me.
It was worn color last time I grew.
A lot of us found those surprises. Okay, we will now come behind the rail and go to our regular agenda, and Mr. Nees, oh, I need a motion for the consent.
What number do you take off?
Number two.
Number two.
Madam Mayor, I move for approval of the consent agenda items three through 11.
Okay, do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Neesmith, we'll go ahead and deal with item number two.
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is the ordinance and resolution with reference to septic fees. And to refresh your memory, it was back in June of this year that we increased our fees quite substantially. For example, septic went from 10 cents a gallon to 30 cents a gallon. Portable toilets went from four cents to 30 cents. And there was some good feedback from the industry that said, "Look, you're going to discourage people from pumping their septic tanks." And, by the way, hurt my business, a local guy, local company. So you asked us to take another look at this, and we did. The, a couple of things to point out. One is that we changed the way, well, the process for setting the septic fees. Instead of putting, codifying the fees in the ordinance, we codified that we can, that the fees are established by resolution by the mayor and commission whenever we want to, rather than having to rewrite the ordinance every time we wanted to change the septic fees. The other thing we did is we went ahead and set a schedule, a five-year increasing rate of the septic fees, rather than increase them all at once. Maybe this sits a nice precedent for the complaint that we all have, we have among ourselves, that we're waiting too long to adjust our rates, that we should be, instead of adjusting them very, in a very big manner, bigly, shall we say, once every few years, maybe we should look at planning those rate increases over time. Anyway, so what we came up with was a very reasonable approach. Like in 2018, our septic fees will be six cents rather than 10 cents. Our portable toilets will be six cents rather than 30 cents. This decreases, increases a couple of cents, two to three cents a year out through 2023. The other thing we did is we, one of the issues we have is that we're processing more septic from outside of our county than we are inside our county, and we're processing less septic now from within Clark County than we have in years, and it's been decreasing over time. And a lot of this septic is coming from counties like Fulton County and Gwinnett County, and they're not in our watershed. They're coming here because it's cheap. So we, at the same time, we didn't want to, we wanted to serve our watershed and our surrounding counties, because very few of those counties have septic treatment facilities. Even Oconee County has no septic facility. Jackson County, I believe, does not have one. So we decided that we would have a special rate for Jackson, Barrow, Oconee, Oglethorpe, and Madison, also known as J-Boom. Get it? J-Boom. So we have a special rate for them, and it's a little higher than our rate, for example. The septic fee is, rather than six cents, it will be 15 cents, and it increases over time. We are saying that we will not process septic from outside of Clark County, Athens-Clark County, and J-Boom. We just won't accept it. They can find, they have facilities in those large metropolitan Atlanta area. So that's our proposal. There was one sort of hanging issue that, just to bring to your attention, and that was, there was the idea that perhaps we should process septic from outside of J-Boom if the vendor is a Clark County business. We decided not to tackle that. It's kind of on the floor to discuss if you wish, but one reason we decided not to tackle it is if we do it for septic, then are we setting a precedent for such things as waste haulers and that sort of thing? So we decided not to address that at this time.
Great. Thanks. And I think we needed that explanation. I think the public needs to know that.
Yeah.
Is there any discussion on this before we vote?
I'll make the motion to accept this proposal.
We have an ordinance, Mr. Berryman.
An ordinance to amend the code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia, with respect to pretreatment of wastewater, hauled wastewater, and for other purposes.
Thank you.
And I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and now's our second opportunity for public input, and this is for the items that are on your agenda under old business, if you're looking at the agenda, and they're items 12 through 14, and then 16 through 19. Item 15 has been pulled from the agenda. So would anyone like to speak to one of those items? Okay, seeing none, we'll come behind the rail, and we'll start our, make sure I didn't overlook anybody. We'll start with item number 12, which are revisions to our stormwater management ordinance. Bill, would you read the ordinance for us?
An ordinance to amend the code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia, with respect to stormwater management and for other purposes.
Did this come from one of our committees? Okay, is there any discussion on this?
I had some questions during the agenda meeting, but I think staff has answered them. From what I understand, this is basically to bring us in compliance with EPD requirements, and we'll be seeing further, a further ordinance down the line to tighten up this stormwater recommendations or requirements a little bit later. Is that the case? Okay. I'll propose that we adopt this.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Did you want to say? Okay, Mr. Neesmith.
She's helping me out. I think this is a good ordinance in that what we're doing is actually making it easier for redevelopment and expansion of businesses, because we're redefining what a site is in the case of an expansion of a business having to comply with our stormwater ordinance, and the site is the improved, the improved area, as opposed to the entire business site. So I think this is a good step.
Great. Any further discussion? Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, our next is the Burn Justice Assistance Grant, and the recommendation is for acceptance of the grant. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I have some questions. Staff provided some answers, but I'm just still kind of struggling with, we've been told there are nine officers, they're essentially covering Athens-Clark and Oglethorpe, but six of the officers are Athens-Clark County officers, and I believe last time we found out that one was, one was with the National Guard, one was the UGA, and one was Oglethorpe out of the other three. And out of the six that we're funding, there only, or the six that we come from, that come from Athens-Clark, we only have four that are partially funded with the grant. So we're basically funding out of the general fund, 192,000, which is 58 percent of the total grant. And I guess, you know, I'm curious, and I don't think my colleagues have a problem most likely with approving this, and I don't either. I guess I'm just kind of curious as to, you know, how we measure, you know, how much effort we're putting into it versus how much our neighboring counties putting into it. How much is going on in Oglethorpe that maybe isn't going on here? And I know that we work together on that, and I understand also from the information we got that anything outside of that jurisdictional area is, you know, any information they find out is sent to those jurisdictions to deal with. But I'm kind of curious, you know, and as much as I love Oglethorpe County, I just don't think we need to be subsidizing that county for that. And so I'm just kind of curious if we could maybe get some information, maybe over the next year, because it sounds like we're getting this grant every year, to get a better feel for that and, you know, see if there's another way that we can fund it. That's a fair amount of money. I mean, 192,000 is about half of a percent of an increase for, or a quarter of a percent of an increase for staff, something like that, for increases, and we're constantly concerned about pay raises for our staff. So just if we could maybe, you know, I'll make a note, I guess it'll come up about this time next year, if we could try to maybe get some performance measures on that and some more data about how it's actually impacting us and affecting us, it would be good to have.
I think it'd be good to have, and I think it would also be good for our citizens to know, what we're discussing here is the northeast Georgia Regional Drug Task Force. And so, you know, what affects, one of us affects all of us, but it is still good information to get, so thank you.
And I'm willing to put that on, make a motion to approve that, sorry.
Okay. We have motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, number 14 is for the disposal of the Water Works Dam and adjacent properties. And this is a little bit more complicated. And I was going to make a recommendation to y'all for you to be thinking about in the discussion, is when I read this, I think it would be better for us tonight to only approve 1A in the recommendation, and which declares its surplus, and then wait until after we receive proposals before we make a decision about the final outcome, where it goes, and, you know, and who's interested in acquiring it, so. Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion that we approve option 1A.
Second.
A motion, second, and discussion.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a substitute motion that we approve option, that we approve option one, but that we designate the proceeds of the sale to the Housing Trust Fund, given the fact that the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, we were told in the agenda report, it's not a significant amount of money for them, but any amount of money for the Housing Trust Fund would be. And since it's a, you know, 60-year-old facility, I'd like to ask that we do that.
We have substitute motion, a substitute motion and a second. Any further discussion before we vote on substitute? Let's do a roll call, just to be sure, Ms. Bratton.
Dickerson?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Gertz?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Wright?
No.
Bailey?
Yes.
Neesmith?
Yes.
Ambie?
Yes.
Hale?
Yes.
Yes, one no.
Great. And we'll get more information as far as the final disposition of it, after our management staff's had a chance to do some more work on it. We have taken item number 15 off, so 16 is another property issue, and it's the acquisition of the North Athens School property.
I'll speak to this.
Discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I had some concerns about this property. It's a historic building, a historic African-American school. I think that it's a good thing that the county maintains control over it, and I just want to assure everyone that, you know, there's no plans to demolish as of yet, and that that will be kind of a more public discussion if and when that time comes.
This is totally acquisition. Did you make a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that we go ahead and adopt this.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, second, and further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the next item we have is an amendment to the village circle and castalia moratoriums, and this is in Ms. Bell's district. Would you like to explain or make a motion?
I think the easiest way to explain is there's some special issues that was a part of some of the residences in the village circle, castalia area, and this is a request that we alter that sum that would be very favorable for some of the residences in the area, and I would appreciate the commission giving that approval.
And there are actually two ordinance changes, I believe.
There's two ordinances, yes.
Will you read those for us, Bill?
They're just resolutions.
Oh, they're resolutions, okay.
One is for village circles.
Okay, great.
And the other is for the castalia area.
So you're moving the adoption of both? Mr. Neesmith?
I'd just like to understand this a little better. Maybe somebody could explain it.
I can take a stab at it, if you don't mind. It's similar to what we did with St. Joseph's, if you remember that, we had a moratorium in St. Joseph's, when we changed the moratorium there. And in this situation, there is a, there is a particular situation where a homeowner's trying to do some work on a house that has a structure that has been added to the historic structure, and it's got a lot of termite infestation, and it is on the side of the house, so it doesn't detract from the front of the house whatsoever. It just, I think they're trying to put it back to the way it originally was before this came about, and they're in the process of moving into the house and doing the construction work on it, and want to get it taken care of.
And Mike, I believe the reason this came to our attention was because it's on a corner lot.
Yes.
And that makes the side visible.
Yes.
Where it wouldn't be on most others, but that's the little background.
But it's, yeah, it's a very, and you'll see as part of it coming through, they'll have to, of course, do a demolition permit for it, and it'll come through the appropriate channels, and you can see clearly what's being done there. But, you know, it's also for other people that may be along the street that are in a similar situation.
Any further questions? And it looks like we got the support of the two people that have the most historic property in their district, so do we have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The next item we have is the approval of the T-Sploß 2018 budget, and this may take some discussion. There'll be two separate resolutions. I'm sorry. There's, you may not want to take the full resolution or the full recommendation on the property, so.
I'll take a stab at it.
Okay. You, I hope you stab better than I'm doing reading it.
Well, let's see if this captures our discussions, including the work session as well, that if we went with option 1A, C, and D, and then put a hold on B, because we have additional details that are coming forward in the next work session that I think we all agreed would be helpful with the category B, which is the project funding schedule versus the details of establishing the budget, and establishing the budget for each project, as well as adopting the ordinance to approve the contract for Jacob's project management.
So basically, what you're excluding is the time, the timing of the projects?
Right, because it allows us to talk more about bonds, no-bonds, loan, the different details that are inherent with the financing schedule, as well as the production schedule. Does that capture?
Makes total sense to me. I was just asking some questions so people out there have an idea what we're talking about. Mr. Neesmith?
That was good. Could I refine it a little bit?
Absolutely.
All we're doing is approving the 109,500,000, which is what we've already been approved by the voters, and we're approving a contract with the Jacob's Project Managers, so they can continue to manage Sploß, including this T-Sploß. We're delaying any decisions on the schedule or the amount of bonds we're going to sell.
And there's one other thing, I think we're allocating the monies as they were voted on to, the budget for each project.
For each item, that's right.
Yes, sir. So we have a very good motion up here. Do I have a second? Have a motion, second, everybody understand it. Bill, I'm sorry, thank you, Bill.
There are two ordinances. The first is an ordinance to amend the FY 2018 annual operating and capital budget for Athens-Clark County, Georgia, so as to establish the budget for the transportation special purpose local option sales tax program, to establish a budget for each project, to amend the project budgets, to reflect the allocation of funds for program administration expense, to authorize a budget transfer to consolidate the funding for program administration and for other purposes. The next is, excuse me, an ordinance to amend the code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia, with respect to approving a contract with Jacob's Project Management Company for professional services for the Athens-Clark County 2018 transportation special purpose local option sales tax program and for other purposes.
And for all those out there that wonder what's going on, we are authorizing getting started on those wonderful T-Sploß projects that y'all have all voted on. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Mayor, move for suspension of rules.
Thank you, Mr. Harry. Have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, we have one item before we go to our planning items, and this is Barnett Shoal Sanitary Sewer Interceptor. Would anybody like to motion, make a motion or start the discussion?
That's in my district, so I'll be happy to make a motion that we accept option 1A, authorize the proceedings with construction of the sanitary sewer project beyond Station 5250, once access is obtained, and B, which is authorize the mayor and appropriate staff to execute all related documents.
Thank you, ma'am. We have a motion, second. We have a second? I'm sorry, didn't get a second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Roll call.
Roll call, please, Jean.
Can I make some clarifications first?
Please, yes.
And so I'm looking at number 11, I just want to make sure I'm reading this right. This does not include authorization to exercise eminent domain to obtain easements.
It doesn't, Mike, that.
For either the Greenway or the sewer?
No, no, sir, just the Greenway.
Sewer.
The mayor and commission have previously authorized condemnation of the sewer in an earlier agenda item, but we did not go forth on that in trying to coordinate both. In speaking with the mayor, she was not comfortable putting that on the agenda, and so we did not include that in this agenda item, but we did include going ahead and proceeding with the sewer work, because we have a contractor on site, you know, this is efficient for the ratepayers, it's going to improve some situations that have caused sanitary sewer overflows as well.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So what we're doing here is we are approving, replacing the sewer that goes along Car Creek, which is going to, well, which is going to, first of all, end up in litigation, second of all, I think, second of all, it's going to perhaps delay the Greenway on that path, and third of all, it's going to do serious environmental damage to Car Creek and the natural environment around it. So I'm not going to be able to support that, that's no surprise to any of you, I'm sure, because I think there's a better way that actually, no one's proved it differently to me, that actually would be a better route for the future, would not end up in litigation, would not delay the Greenway, and therefore would be a much better option.
Let me get to somebody who hadn't spoken, Mike, and I'll come back. Ms. Wright?
I just wanted to clarify the 52 plus 50, part of the lessons we've been learning in this project topic is that's 5,250 feet manhole, so that's talking about the length of the sewer line in that specific part, but, so that's, the 52 is really 5,250. I thought that was interesting.
Yes, ma'am.
Jargon.
Yes, ma'am.
I had some pretty serious concerns about replacing the sewer and hoped that there were other options that would be less impactful environmentally, but after seeing all the options that staff presented and recognizing, you know, the greater need to expand further lines and possibly cross other creeks, I feel like this is the only option. And I understand it's contentious, you know, and I hate the idea And I understand it's contentious, um, you know, and I hate the idea of all that construction going on along, near that creek bed, but I, I just, I, I've walked, I, I went out there and walked the property, and it desperately needs replacing, those manholes are overflowing, and I was there when it hadn't rained in a couple of weeks probably, and you could smell that sewage coming up. So it's a desperately needed project, and I just couldn't be convinced that any of the other options were, were feasible or practical or affordable.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I might need some assistance from the attorney to, to phrase this correctly, but I would like to make a substitute motion that would include utilizing eminent domain for the Greenway right-of-way as well, along basically that same path. That's...
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second.
I would like feedback from the attorney on that.
What, what is your question, sir?
Anything we need to know about that? Well, as far as it interfering with...
When we were originally preparing the, um, the agenda report for this, it did include a resolution for eminent domain for the Greenway. So I prepared a resolution, um, for that purpose, if the mayor and commission wanted to adopt it.
And would that, um, be included in this substitute motion? And we would refer back to that, Commissioner Bailey?
Well, you, you don't have the, the resolution before you, I, I would, I could hand that out, and you could consider that, but, um...
I'm just, I'm glad that you have already gone through that exercise, so that if Commissioner Bailey includes that with the motion, then we have the legal document to go with it. Does that make sense?
It's entirely acceptable to me.
Well, I, I will, I will tell y'all why I did not put it on the agenda. I'm, I'm absolutely a supporter of the Greenway, and we refer to the Greenway as a transportation corridor, but I would think that if we polled our citizens in this community, most of them, including myself, would consider it more recreation than a transportation corridor. I think eventually it will have some transportation uses, but there's nothing, um, critical about approving this now. The, the sewer is critical, and it is, it's an absolute public need that has to be done, and I'm, I'm comfortable to condemn when we can't work out something for, for public purposes, but, uh, that, that are essential purposes, but not to take somebody's property against their will without, um, without it being an absolute necessity for the community. There, there's one other issue too, and that's that the owner of this property is, 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 uh, at Emory, I mean, at, um...
Mayo Clinic.
Mayo Clinic, very gravely ill, and I think that it would just be unconscionable to do this when he's not available to respond. So, that was, those are the reasons that I did not put it on the agenda. Mike, and then Sharon.
Yeah, I just have a, some follow-up questions, so if, I'm trying to figure out, is this September 5th, 2017, but the one you're suggesting that we approve the eminent domain? Because I don't, I'm having trouble finding that in the history of this, for the sewer.
The sewer is August 2nd, it's, um, it's fact, it's an issue's item eight, August 2nd, 2016. We had a resolution that did that.
Okay.
For the sewer.
All right. And my second question is for Attorney Barryman. Would this be the first time this, when we would do eminent domain for Greenway purposes?
Yes.
And I'd have, I, I think we ought to, you know, certainly, I haven't seen the language for a resolution that, that would allow for that. I think they are two separate issues, that we ought to treat them as two separate issues at this point in time. I think we're all supportive of the Greenway, but certainly, certainly since this would be the first time that this would happen, um, we need to tread with caution on it, because we have a lot of work to do on the Greenway, and we want to do it in a really, uh, good, positive way. And, um, so, uh, that would be my suggestion, especially since we haven't seen the language to the resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Tandy. Any further, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sharon, you were, you were first, I appreciate it.
Um, so, some of my, I have some similar concerns. I'm, I'm concerned that we really haven't even addressed this with the property owner. On the property owner, we're negotiating for sewer easement, not for a Greenway. And I just, I guess I'd ask everybody behind the rail, maybe those who are paying attention to this meeting tonight, to think about the fact that there's sewer lines underneath a lot of our properties. I've got quite a few on, along the, uh, Coney River, of constituents of mine who, we've had to deal with people who've trespassed, because they see sewer easement, and they think they can just walk on it, they can't. That's private property, and I'm, I'm concerned that even though we've talked about a concept, and we, and we did approve a conceptual idea to follow, you know, and it makes sense in some ways to follow that, that we never really had that discussion with the property owner. And, um, and I, I guess I also think, we ha- we weren't aware of that anyway. I also think that, um, uh, if we were, I mean, all the time when we're dealing zoning issues, we think about, people buy property with a certain understanding of how things are going to be. You have, you know, sewer lines come through, you make agreements, you know, if you need to, to do that, but you don't necessarily think that you're going to have hundreds of people or bikers going through your property at any given time. I think that's a, that's a, a difference, um, that they, people who buy a property didn't necessarily sign up for when they did that. So I'm concerned that we've done that. I also understand, I, I talked to the manager earlier today. I mean, I guess I'm thinking there may be some alternative routes, and we haven't pursued for the, for the Greenway. Perhaps we may still have to cross this gentleman's property, but maybe we don't have to cross as much of it. So I'm concerned about that as well, so...
Mr. Williams, you wanted to say something?
And we, we did share with the mayor and commission that, um, there was an offer made, and it did include both for the Greenway and the sewer, so that was clear to the property owner. And secondly, these concepts have been approved by the Greenway Commission as well as the Mayor and Commission, and if the intent is to get through Horseshoe Bend to Research Road, unless you build a bridge across and another bridge across to get around it, it, it's going to have to go through that property. That's one route, and the other is whether or not you want to do the spur, if you will, up to Barnett Shoals along Car Creek, but those, those are, um, those are two previously approved concepts.
Mr. Neesmith, and then I'll come back to Mr. Gerz.
Well, um, the property owner, uh, agreed to the easement on the Greenway if we would use alternate route number four for the sewer. He's fine with that. Uh, I don't think he's going to agree to the Greenway if we, uh, if we do a, if we, if we put the sewer along Car Creek, if we replace that sewer, he's probably not going to agree to any Greenway. So again, you say you, that the staff has given us a complete explanation of all the possibilities, I totally disagree. Number four, we saw a bright yellow line that we didn't even know where it went. It was not engineered to avoid, uh, some of the creek crossings or some of the more, uh, sensitive areas across the Dequal property. So I don't, I don't agree that, that all the alternatives have been explored. I, I think that, for whatever reasons, that we were given sort of a, nah, that won't work, as opposed to some real study on alternate number four. If we had alternate number four, we would get our sewer, we would relieve the pressure on the Car Creek sewer from both directions, we would provide more capacity to the north along Lexington Road, and we would have our sewer and our Greenway without going to court. So I, I cannot support either one of these, uh, proposals.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to say that, uh, we did discuss the idea of including the Greenway as, as part of this eminent domain, and I agree with the manager, it's, it's going to be a route that we're going to have to do it. And the reason to add this substitute motion is because I firmly believe that we're going to have to do this anyway. We've worked with the landowner, we've made offers, we've gone back and forth. This landowner is going to be compensated at a fair rate, at appraised value for this property. So we've tried to work with this person, we have to put a sewer through that area, but it's also useful for the Greenway, and it, I think, is some value to us as a governmental body to do both things at once. That was the reason for the substitute motion. Thank you.
Well, I'll, I'll make one quick comment, uh, related to that, and, and I've said, uh, and I'm very firm in my, in my belief of what I've said to you all, but they would not be done concurrently. If, if we, if we, um, condemn the property for Greenway now, they would, the Greenway would not be going in along with sewer line. Is that not correct?
That's right, but the condemnation proceedings would be filed concurrently.
But, but those are pieces of paper, and there's, there is no reason for us to have to do that this month. Yes, sir.
I mean, I want to, I want to be sure that everybody understands, everybody understands what the landowner's objection to this Car Creek sewer is. His objection is that he doesn't want a sewer on his property, his objection isn't, isn't, it, it's simply he doesn't want to tear up the 50-feet ri- uh, construction right-of-way to put this sewer in, which is going to have a very negative effect on the creek and on the natural environment around that creek. That's his objection, it's not, don't touch my land, it's, don't do that. He's willing to put, to, put the sewer in a different location, but not this one. He's willing to put the Greenway in this location along Car Creek. I just want to be clear about that. He's, 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 he's not being completely unreasonable.
Well, the, the, the bottom line for me is that the property owner, at this time, is not able to discuss or enter into this discussion with us.
He's made us an offer. He's made us an offer.
Well, it's not on the, it's, it's not the force for action tonight, so I, I think we are down to, yes, sir, Mr. Gerz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to address a few of the comments that have come up tonight, given the alignment that's on our agenda. I mean, I, I, I think at, at our core, you know, we sort of collectively want to make sure that we're doing the best infrastructure development we can in regard to environmental impact. Once that's said, you, there's certainly an obviously disagreement about exactly what each individual alignment may mean in terms of environment, environmental impact. But just so the public knows, what we're talking about is replacing a sewer line in an existing sewer alignment. So we're not talking about putting a sewer line in a place where a sewer line does not exist. And in fact, in this replacement, what we'll do is replace a sewer line that's overflowing and a sewer line that at least for a couple hundred feet of the segment actually goes counter to gravity in the wrong direction, which old infrastructure sometimes will do. And I'll also say that just given the array of current Athens Clark County staff that we have, we've been able to exact from them lots of agreements about how exactly construction will work within this easement. I, I, I'm the first to say that there have been people who've worked for the unified government who I think didn't have environmental interests in their core portfolio of values. The folks who we are working with now do have that, and have talked about specifically planting native species to replace the trees that certainly would have to go as we move from a 15-inch diameter line to a 30-inch diameter line. And, and so I think we're going to end up with a quality environment at the end of the day, and I think they're going to be careful about the concerns here. And again, we, we've already got overflows, a segment of this existing 15-inch line actually goes through one side of a creek bank into the other side of a creek bank, creating an artificial dam in that creek. That would be eliminated with this action. I, I know Commissioner Neesmith likes another alignment that he's calling alignment number four. That would cross several other properties, including a couple of creeks that would require future interaction.
No, it wouldn't.
So, some land would have to be disturbed. This is land that's already disturbed. You know, we could all say, you know, we would like to remove 50 or 60 years of history and put infrastructure in places that it's not in. But, but this is replacing existing infrastructure with better quality infrastructure by quality staff members who are play, paying attention to the minute details of each tree that we look at. Staff have provided me with photographs of tree after tree with indicated species and tree diameter. I, I have the sense that they're being very careful with this piece of property. And I just want to make that clear to everybody, so, uh, I'm, I'm sorry that we come down kind of in, in different places around this particular project, but I, I feel confident that this is, can be a quality project that respects that creek.
Mike?
Sure, thank you, ma'am. Madam Mayor, no, I would just like to sort of, kind of, continue the, the, the discussion about, um, treating these two items separately between the Greenway and the, and the sewer line, especially, uh, simply because, you know, one, we haven't seen the language to this resolution. It hasn't been part of the, part of the official agenda document here. It's not, not very transparent to take it tonight and, and, and vote on it in that manner, which is primarily a good, a good enough reason for me to, to not treat these two at the same time as we're doing here. I mean, we all want transparent government. None of the resolution language has been put online or put as part of our agenda packet, uh, and I can appreciate, uh, appreciate the effort to, to get it in this, like this, but it's not, it's not the right way that we should be doing it.
I just want to reiterate that this is not new infrastructure, it's replacing old infrastructure that's in terrible shape and leaking and compromising the health of the creek. And, um, also, this is a piece of property that is not occupied, it's, it's a piece of vacant property. It's not like we're going into somebody's home, it is, is a vacant piece of property that the value will be greatly increased by the Greenway. You know, that we see it all the time, it is, you know, that property values do increase along these, um, transportation networks, and this is a valuable transportation network. I equate it to, you know, a sidewalk, and we did recently, um, exercise eminent domain for some property, um, in the Rock Springs area to build a sidewalk. So I feel like there's plenty of good reason to move forward with the Greenway project, and there are lots of people that live over there who will certainly benefit from that Greenway connection. This will essentially connect Barnett Shoals and College Station Road, providing these folks that live in these apartment communities with an easy, direct transportation to a commercial corridor where they can find jobs, um, and, and, you know, get, get to school. So, I'm, I'm in support of moving forward, and, you know, we did have discussions and negotiations with the owner. He's been aware from the beginning that this is intended for a Greenway passage, and from what I understand, he didn't have any objection to the Greenway passage on this specific route. His objection is primarily to the sewer and the disturbance of that route. And, and it, you know, as, as best I can tell, and, and all the discussion we've had about this, I don't see those alternative routes being feasible. There's topography issues, there's other, other creeks to cross. This is a, a route that's long been established, and the, the pipe needs to be replaced regardless.
Mr. Neesmith?
Crossing the other creeks is not a part of what needs to be done now on this route number four. All route number four is, is it connects to the Dequal line at Barnett Shoals Road, and then connects to our property by going along the power line easement. The crossing the creeks later is an option for later if we want to increase the capacity of the sewer from, from Lexington Road or points north. So that's, that's not what this is about. Those creeks are not in jeopardy here. By, by connecting, uh, the, uh, the Barnett Shoals Road sewer through the Dequal property to this, 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 this fourth route along the power easement, we reduce, we reduce the strain on the Car Creek sewer, uh, probably significantly. And no one was able to tell us how much it would reduce, although they did agree it would reduce it. And if the Car Creek line was lined rather than replaced, it would probably last for decades, those, those are Frank's words. So, again, I think we are, uh, I don't know what we are, maybe we're ill-informed, but, uh, this, this is, this is going to delay every, this is going to delay the Greenway. And oh, by the way, this could, this body, not us, but previous commissioners, decided that sewers should not go along creeks, that our goal was not to do that. Now we have the opportunity to take a, a sewer away from a creek, and we're not going to do it.
Allison, have you spoken?
Commissioner Bailey was first.
Well, have you spoken yet, though?
I have.
Okay, Jared.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to call the question on the, uh, the substitute motion, please.
I'll second.
Have a motion second to call the question. This is a substitute motion, which would be condemning, um, a citizen's private property, um, possibly against their will, we don't know, because he's not available.
We're, we're voting to call the question.
Well, okay, we're voting to call the question, which, which is to condemn...
Which is to vote.
To have a vote.
Which is to vote, yes.
All in favor, call the question?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, now we're going to vote on whether or not, yeah, whether or not to condemn the property along with approving the, um...
Easement for the sewer.
The sewer easement, sorry, it's already, we already have the easement for the sewer. This is just authorizing the contractor to continue on that route to finish it up.
Madam Mayor? The call to the question that we just voted on just means that now we can vote on the substitute motion. So what we're going to vote on is... So what we're going to vote on is whether or not we will include the resolution for also using eminent domain for the Greenway.
Right. And that was your motion?
And I'd like to suggest that we have a roll call.
Yes, absolutely. And again, what the question on the floor is, was the original question that was on our agenda tonight was to authorize the contractor to continue with the sewer across this particular piece of property. Mr. Bailey has added condemnation of it for the Greenway as well. So, roll call, please. Yes, sir?
Commissioners have not seen this resolution, and I feel very uncomfortable with them voting on a vote for a resolution they have not seen. And so I would think the only if, to go through with a vote, I would think we would need to hand the resolution out. I do need to go get the maps. I did not bring those from my office and bring them back here, if you want to go forward. But at this point, there has been no resolution seen by the members.
Bailey, make a motion to table.
Well, we've already had, we've already had a mo, I need some help as a parliamentarian. We have, we have, we have two motions on the floor.
You can't, you have a substitute motion that has to be addressed.
And in order, in order to address the substitute motion, I think our attorney is very correct in that we need to have that information before us, before you vote. And so...
Well, Madam Mayor, may I suggest that if the members of the commission agree with the attorney, then we just have the vote and they can vote it down if that's what they agree that we haven't seen the resolution. But in my opinion, we need to go ahead and vote on it.
From a parliamentary standpoint, I agree with you that we need to vote, but I caution you all to be very careful about voting on something you've not seen. So we'll have a roll call, Ms. Bradlin.
This is on the substitute motion.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes.
Neesmith?
No.
Hamby?
No.
Vale?
No.
Dickerson?
No.
Sims?
No.
Gerst?
No.
Link?
No.
Okay. We're back to the original motion.
Original motion, which is, get to my notes, would be to option 1A and B as seen in the packet.
Which is, which is authorizing the continuation of the work on the sewer.
Which is getting the new sewer line in there where the current one is failing.
And do a roll call again, please.
We have a second. We already have a second somewhere.
We do have a roll call, a motion, a second roll call, Ms. Bradlin.
Wright?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Neesmith?
No.
Hamby?
No.
Vale?
No.
Dickerson?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Gerst?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Three no, six yes.
Okay, so substitute, so the original motion's passed. Okay, this takes us to our planning commission recommendations. And on planning items, there are, did we have anybody to sign up for the 10-minute portions? Okay. And on planning items, we have a little bit different process on our public input, and that's if someone signs up in advance, they can have 10 minutes pro and 10 minutes con. And the other thing is that we handle these one item at a time. So we'll go, we'll start with item number 20, which is the request of Michael Burke with QuickTrip Corporation and Jim Warrens for Twigland Van Buren for rezoning of property on 1321 O'Conne Street, 170 to 184 Elbert Street, and the proposed use is for a fuel center. Would you read the ordinances for us, Mr. Bearman, before we get started?
There are two. The first is an ordinance to amend the code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia with respect to amending the official future development map of Athens-Clark County by changing the designation of three parcels of land comprising approximately 3.02 acres located at 1321 O'Conne Street and 170 through 184 Elbert Street from Main Street business to corridor business. The next is an ordinance to amend the code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia with respect to rezoning three parcels of land comprising approximately 3.02 acres located at 1321 O'Conne Street and 170 through 184 Elbert Street from CGA, Commercial General Airport Overlay, to CGAPD, Commercial General Airport Overlay Plan Development and for other purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Bearman. We have a substitute motion in our package, and I was going to ask before we start discussion and motions if Brad would review for us the effects of the CDO. I think there was some...
Let me do, you go first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I told you I'll let you talk in here. We're ignoring, anybody want to speak to that item? Mr. Warrens, I think you have 10 minutes.
My name is Jim Warrens. My address is 244 East Washington Street. I told the planning commission, and I'll tell you, this is the most complex and convoluted rezone that I have ever handled. The QuickTrip representatives have really worked hard on this and have shown their willingness to work with Athens-Clark County staff, the airport authority, the Firefly Trail Committee, and the Georgia Department of Transportation. They worked hard to meet the spirit of the zoning code. We are asking for several waivers in the master plan, but the spirit of the code is well-met to provide a needed service center that's right next to the bypass. The fact that GDOT's working for them shows this. It's highly unusual for GDOT to approve anything that's within the exit ramps and so on. And eventually, when they get done with all their stuff, this will be within some of their exit ramp plans. Given the complexities of this site and the fact that in order to access it off of O'Conne Street is right-in only, and all the exit has to be on the backside of the property, it's highly questionable whether any other entity may have tackled this project or tried to do something with this location. And I think all of us that travel that corridor know that this location has been in its current state for about 25 years, and this is a vastly needed improvement as we enter the Athens-Clark, well, we're in Athens-Clark County, but as we come into the downtown area and come into the central business district. QuickTrip has agreed to provide additional parking for the Firefly Trail, and they've agreed to provide additional parking for the parking ride. They have coordinated and revised plans in order to accommodate the interaction with the Firefly Trail and the location of a plaza where people could stop and rest, park their bikes, have a drink, go get some coke, do whatever they want to. They worked with the airport authority on the lighting requirements, and the airport authority has approved a waiver of having amber lights within the airport zone. Airport authority does not take this lightly. They've got their own experts, their own engineers and so on, that they looked at as to, and they're well aware what their long-range plans are, but they approved this. QuickTrip withdrew their request to have higher candle power that they felt like they needed for security purposes. And after withdrawing that, or as a part of withdrawing that request, they took a look at, make sure that their security cameras would work adequately. They are extremely consumer-friendly. They know that they exist by people coming in there and feeling safe to come into the store, and so security is of primary importance to them, and they were willing to work this out. They worked to realign the old Winterville Road to provide access, and they are doing this at their expense. And eventually, what the driveway that they're creating and the easement that they will grant to Athens-Clark County so that people can come south on Old Winterville Road and come to a T intersection or a cross intersection there at O'Conne Street, again, they're doing that at their expense. In order to exit the backside of the property, one of the first suggestions that was made was rather than having exits onto Elbert Street, which was a substandard street, which would have had to have been improved, and if it continued to remain a street, and I realize you're going to vote on this later on, it's one of the conditions, but if that had taken place, then Elbert Street would have remained a public street that the county would have had to have continued to maintain. And so the suggestion was made is why don't we abandon Elbert Street and let that become a part of your property and become your back driveway, which will be the exit onto Old Winterville Road. Now, when we first got into this, I don't know that anybody looked at what I'm about to describe next, but I think it's extremely important to this total project. These properties are adjacent to the right-of-way for the railroad where the Firefly Trail's going to be. This portion of that railroad property is subject to an 1840 deed whereby an easement was given to the railroad to run their tracks, but there was a versionary clause in that deed that provided that in the event the railroad ceased to exist there, that those property rights referred it back to the property owner. And the position that has been taken consistently with all of these properties is that the southern half of the railroad right-of-way would go to the southern property owners, and the northern half of the railroad right-of-way would go to the northern property owners as the successors in interest to that original 1840 grant. So in this particular case, everything on the southern half of that right-of-way will come to QuickTrip. Now, the abandonment of Elbert Street is the abandonment of Elbert Street as a public street, not as a right-of-way of it. And typically, what happens is that the government owns the underlying land in a street, so when they abandon the right-of-way, they give up the street, but they still own the land underneath it. In this particular case, if you, if and when later on you vote to abandon Elbert Street, all you're doing is voting to abandon it as a public right-of-way so that QuickTrip can utilize it as their back driveway. QuickTrip has agreed, and I commuted this, this happened just today, but I've communicated it to Bill, and when one attorney communicates a settlement to another attorney, he can tell you it becomes binding. QuickTrip has agreed that they will donate all of that right-of-way to Athens-Clark County, except for the portion of the abandoned Elbert Street. So there will be no charge to the county for all of the right-of-way that's between the northern property line and the southern line of the railroad right-of-way. I think this just illustrates the spirit of cooperation by which QuickTrip has tried to work with this community. From the comments that have been made in various meetings and me talking to a number of you, it's obvious that there's a consensus that the QuickTrip at this location is a vast improvement and is needed for the development of the O'Conne Street Lexington Road corridor. So for all of these reasons, we would ask that this body approve the master plans submitted by the applicant with the waivers that were contained therein that has been outlined in the staff report with recommendation for approval with four conditions, one of which is the abandonment of Elbert Street. And the other conditions were the sidewalk be widened by eight feet or to eight feet, and that some technical information be given that was not on the plan, and that's been taken care of. And then the fourth condition was, is that they would continue to work with the Firefly Trail folks to coordinate whatever efforts need to be made as far as the interconnection. QuickTrip's willing to do all of those and to meet those conditions. And so our request is, is that this be approved as presented to you and as recommended by both staff and the planning commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Warrens. Would anyone else like to speak to this? Anyone else that speaks would be limited to the normal three minutes. Okay, seeing none, we'll come behind the rail, and I think we need to vote on the future development map first.
Madam Mayor, move for the approval of the future development map.
Second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we get to the actual vote on what's going to happen with this property, and I believe we have a CDO. And would you like to present the CDO, and then I'll let Brad come in on?
I would like to, yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
First of all, I do commend the folks at QuickTrip, Mike Carey and all of them have done a great job collaborating with the Firefly Trail people and the planning department and the whole thing, and I think it's a good project. And my commission-defined option is not very complex at all. It has to do with lighting. I'm not asking them to reduce the brightness of the lighting. I'm not asking to reduce the foot candles. If they've agreed to go with 25, which is our ordinance, and I'm not asking them to reduce the lumens. I'm asking them to change the color to less blue, less white. You've got on your, on your desks there, you have a little chart that shows light colors, and what I'm asking for is no more than 3,500 Kelvin color temperature. You can see that that's way above the yellow or amber spectrum, which is our law, by the way, and it's way below what they have in their spec that Mr. Carey was gracious enough to send me, which their spec says 5,000 Kelvin, which is considered blue sky. Here's the issue. If you look at this picture, that's a similar development, and those are 3,500 Kelvin lights. You can see they're quite white. You can, you can see a lot. They're not like amber, where you might not be able to see as well because the colors aren't all there. You can also see the importance of shielding, which they've agreed to do because you can see the glare coming off of those fixtures. But, so this is not going to affect the safety. This change is not going to affect the safety or really even the illumination of their project. It's going to affect light reflectivity because the higher 5,000, 6,000 Kelvin is a narrower wavelength, and it reflects greater distances when it bounce off an object or if it's, or if it's direct. In this case, since it's bouncing off the pavement, it will, it will go further into the air. This is in the airport overlay. I looked at and talked to some folks, a folk at the airport authority, and they didn't even consider the brightness or the Kelvin, the temperature of the light, other than say it doesn't have to be amber. The reason we require amber is because that's a very broad wavelength, and it doesn't reflect much. So I'm not asking for amber. I'm asking for something that has a much whiter color. And it's, it's not going to cost them any more money. It's not going to affect their business. It's going to make the airport overlay a little safer, and that's what this is about. We're trying to get an airline in here. Let's act like big boys and provide the right kind of safety features we need in the airport approach. I think that sort of says it all. I'm asking for no more than 3,500 Kelvin.
Yes, ma'am.
So I make a motion that we go with the substitute.
We have a motion. Do we have a second on substitute?
I'll second it.
Okay. Actually, before we start discussing, did you have a concern or something you want to explain to us?
I guess the biggest thing that I would point out with this, you know, if this were to move forward, which I think you certainly have a right to do so, we've gotten into now regulating lighting based on color temperature for this property, which is something, this would be the only property that I'm aware of in the county that we've imposed any type of color temperature restriction on by Kelvin calculations. You know, where I may have some concern with that would primarily be from a standpoint that we're now, we're imposing restrictions based on a standard that doesn't even show up in our ordinance anywhere. I mean, the issue of Kelvin measurement was discussed at the time that the lighting ordinance was ultimately put into place, but did not make the final cut. So, you know, can you do it? I think you certainly can do that, but it would impose a different set of standards on this property than anybody else has. If we ever did receive a complaint from somebody that felt like their lighting was out of order, I don't have any equipment to measure Kelvin readings on a piece of property because it doesn't appear in a ordinance anywhere. So that would require us to then buy equipment to act accordingly. Those are just some things that I would point out, is if there are concerns, those would be them.
Madam Mayor, may I address that?
Well, we had a bunch of hands up.
I'll...
Okay.
Well, first of all, you don't have to have equipment to measure Kelvin. That's a specification on the, on the bulb or the fixture, and it's not completely accurate. It's with plus or minus of a couple of hundred degrees Kelvin. Second of all, if you want, we can just go back and make it amber because that is in our law. And third of all, the whole, the whole technology of lighting has changed greatly since LEDs came on the market because now we can control the color of the light much more easily than we ever could before. The way we did it before was by using a different kind of light, like mercury light or, you know, I can't name them all, but you know what I'm saying. And so it was a matter of what, how you produce the light as opposed to what that particular fixture using LED generates. They can control an LED and have it very yellow or very white. So this is something we may have to address sooner or later, and I propose that in this situation, we're talking about the airport low overlay, that we either go back to amber or we, you know, we jump into the, into the present and manage by Kelvin.
Thank you. And I apologize, Mr. Sims, I should have called on you first. I normally do when it's in the commissioner's district.
That's perfect.
So I'll call on you next.
I'm sorry, here.
That's all right.
That may...
That may, only thing I was going to do was make the, make a motion to approve what was recommended by the planning commission, you know, the, and that's my motion.
That's a substitute.
And, well, now it's a substitute motion. But the fact is that, as we've heard, QuickTrip has done everything that they've asked and even more, and these, they are following our ordinance, they aren't doing anything that's not required by us. They aren't, you know, they're overstepping their bounds, they're staying within the rules and regulations that we have, and so I, that's why my motion is, I'm making that motion.
We're going to go on with the discuss, oh, do we have a second for the 70?
Yeah, a couple of them.
Who, who's second first?
Allison.
It was a tie.
Okay, so Allison, choose who you want, Jean.
Although we're not acting like big boys.
Okay, is, is there any, is there any discussion on the motion that's on the floor, which is the original recommendation, which is now the substitute motion? Melissa was first, then Allison, then Sharon, and I don't know who else wants to speak.
I, I also have some concerns about the lighting ordinance because the technology has changed and, you know, we've seen as Georgia powers come around and replace some of our streetlights that, you know, it's, it's a stark difference. And I've read a little bit of research about the impacts of that lighting on psychology, sleep patterns, wildlife. I really think it's time we revisit that lighting ordinance, and I hope that this will kind of be the trigger that, that has us do that. It, it's changed greatly just in the past few years, it seems, and I was prepared to vote for Jerry's CDO. I also had some concerns about the landscaping, particularly the, the eastern end, that triangle kind of hanging off the eastern end of the project, or western, I'm sorry, I don't know where I am. And I had some discussion with Mr. Warrens about this, and seeing that GDOT is going to come through and bust right through that triangle and probably use it as a staging area and god knows what, it would probably be fruitless to recommend any particular planting plan right now, but I do see this as a, a great opportunity to get a nice gateway and some signage for our Firefly Trail. This is probably the only place where the Firefly Trail almost intersects with, you know, a, a major business corridor. And I hope that, you know, after GDOT gets, comes in and does what they need to do to get that, that intersection aligned, I would ask that the developer come back and, and have some conversation with our staff regarding tree species, leaning towards native species, and, and possibly some, you know, shrubbery and perennial beds to, to make for more of a, a natural planted area. And also talk with our rail trail committee and our, our staff and even GDOT about what is an appropriate kind of gateway signage setup for this whole area. You know, this is the opportunity to announce to anybody driving into town that, hey, we've got a rail trail here, all you got to do is make this turn. And there is actually parking on the property that's intended for the rail trail, so I think it would be appropriate. And so I hope that there's some real close attention and, and significant aesthetic attention paid to this area. I know there's this little, there's going to be this little triangle out here abandoned off to the edge, and then there's this kind of vast open lawn area. So I just hope that, that, I would actually like to request that staff, as this project moves forward, have that conversation with the developer when it comes to the final details of landscaping. But otherwise, I, I think this is a good project, and I, I really appreciate all the hard work that's gone into it, it's certainly been difficult.
Thank you, Mr. Warrens.
Yeah, I did want to speak to the opportunity to have the trailhead sign across the street where the parking right is, and also we have Greenway Trailhead where that's happening right by the Waffle House, that's my district on the other side, so we do have plenty of space there to include signage to the rails, to trails on the property that we have. Manager Williams, this might be out of the blue that can't be answered, what kind of lighting is it in our park at ride, parking right across the street? It matches our ordinance, I would imagine.
Yeah, anything we, we put in would match our ordinance, but I can't tell you the specific specifics.
I don't know.
Yeah, I should have, I should have dialed that question in ahead of time, but I, I don't want to look like it's do as I say, not as I do. I'm supportive of this coming forward with matching what we're doing across the street lighting-wise, which is matching our ordinance. And I, I was also interested, I wasn't sure if Mr. Warrens had time to see the commission defined option and if there, if it was appropriate for any adverse effect of it, that, if he could explain that, since we're discussing something about that project, is that appropriate?
I honestly don't feel it's quite appropriate, and I'm sure he's not prepared to, to answer that because, well, if you are prepared to answer it, come on up, we'll hear what you've got to say.
As Mr. Neesmith said, he and Mr. Carey had extensive interaction on this, a lot of detail. And in one of the things that Mr. Neesmith submitted is that to go to the Kelvin rating that he's requesting is that colors will not necessarily appear as they actually are. And again, this comes back to the security issue, is that if we're going to have video security and so on, then the desire is, is that the colors be reflected correctly so that if somebody's being prosecuted on the basis of these videos and there's some question about, well, that's not really the color or whatever. So from a security standpoint, that's why we would ask that we not have the restriction and just go with what has been recommended.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Warrens. And Sharon, you rest.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that when the Airport Authority looked at this, they had their engineers look at it, and they didn't have a concern about, you know, not approving the, the variance for the amber lighting. They basically felt like the light shielding, you know, did what it needed to, to mitigate the risk for aviation, so the Airport Authority is not concerned about it, I don't, you know, and engineers that work for us are not concerned about it, then I'm not either.
Okay, before we take our votes, anybody that hadn't been heard?
Madam Mayor, a follow-up question. Thank you, I appreciate it. So Brad, in our, in our Airport Overlay District ordinance, it requests that lighting shall be fully shielded in amber in color, and of course, that's one of the waivers requested here. And I'm just looking at the ordinance passage date, it's been updated in 2009 and 2012. Can you point to some commercial properties that have used amber color as part of their construction plan within the Airport Overlay District within that time period, say, so the last five years it looks like is the last time the ordinance was updated? I mean, the, the lows obviously predates it, trying to think of other.
What about the BP?
I would just, I mean, anything that's been built within the, the time period within the Airport Overlay would have followed those criteria in terms of, of their lighting color.
Parking right.
Okay, wait, the, the motion that's.
May I?
Yes, sir.
The minutes of the Airport Authority meetings do not talk about any engineer testifying or saying anything about it. There was a zoning committee meeting where there was a staff member there. Second of all, I want you to understand the reason it's important to have these, these colors and why amber is what the preferred color is, is simply because on a foggy rainy night, the further the light can go, which is on the white spectrum and blue and white spectrum, the higher that fog is going to be perceived by the pilot. Amber light will not go very far, so it's going to be, the fog is going to be visible just above the building, but the wider it gets, the further up it goes. And so in the airport approach, they're going to hit a fog bank when they come over this building because of the reflection of the light off of the concrete. Not only the concrete, not only the lighting underneath the, the overhead, but the lighting that's on, on the outside of it, the, whatever they're using for lighting up the landscape. So this is not unreasonable, it's not unreasonable, and, and I hope that you'll just realize, by the way, as far as perception of, perception of color if they have a criminal case, look at 3,500. And if you look, if you look, go to the, to the publications about the appropriate use of light, you'll, you'll find that 2,700 to 3,500 is what's recommended for security lighting. That's what's recommended. So that, that's just not valid.
Thank you, Mr. Neesmith. Mr. Gertz?
Madam Mayor, I will say, I mean, I think there are certainly some interesting arguments kind of all around the lighting question. I mean, what, what is clear to me, though, is that technology has changed in the roughly eight years since the lighting ordinance was significantly amended, and, and I would ask that we be able to take another look at that ordinance with some staff assistance, just given this passage of time, our better understanding of the ordinance, its application over almost this last decade, and these changes in technology. Just want to make that a question.
When, when the load slows down a bit, we'll do that. Okay, we have a motion on the floor, and the motion that is now a substitute motion is actually the recommendation from the planning commission and from staff. Let's do a roll call vote, Miss Breton.
Sam?
Yes.
Gertz?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Neesmith?
No.
Ambie?
No.
Bale?
Yes.
Dickerson?
Yes.
Two, no, seven yes.
Okay, the ordinance is passed. Now we'll go to item number 21, and this is the request of Smith Planning Group for Barrett Nation Investment Properties LLC for rezoning of a parcel on 1331 Millich Avenue and proposed use as a restaurant. I don't believe anyone signed up for the 10 minutes, did they, Jean? So anyone that would like to speak to this ordinance, this is time to come forward.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Commissioner. My name is Bob Smith of the Smith Planning Group, and I'm pleased to be a part of the design team for this project in Five Points, and members of the team who are with me tonight include Katrina Evans with E&amp;E Architecture, Scott Parish, and of course, Sachin Patel. As you know, we are requesting to convert the existing structure at the corner of South Millich Avenue and Morton Avenue to this rather unique restaurant concept. We began the design process back in May of this year by holding a series of community meetings for the purposes of presenting the plan to the neighborhood and, and receiving some community input. And by virtue of the fact that this is a planned development, it's been reviewed twice by staff and, and twice by the planning commission. The result is a, is a master plan that has been thoroughly vetted and perhaps more importantly embraced by the neighborhood. And I'm pleased that the planning commission has unanimously recommended approval. So I look forward to seeing this project through to construction, and I respectfully request your approval this evening, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else wish to speak to this?
Good evening. My name is Scott Parish. I have lived in Athens for a little over 20 years. I married a third generation, born and raised Athenian, and we are raising our son here in Athens, and I say that because we have no desire to ever leave, we love Athens and we plan on being here for the rest of our lives. Now, three years ago, we opened the pine, and a year ago, we expanded. And our thought process from day one has always been to embrace the neighborhood. Thankfully, the neighborhood has embraced us. This is the same thought process we are going to take with us to El Barrio, even though it'll be a taqueria in a much more fast casual atmosphere, we still foresee the support of the neighborhood. I don't have actual facts when it comes to the amount of walking business, but I will tell you, having been in business now for three years, a good porch, portion of our business are families and friends that walk to the restaurant. I can only imagine that will be the same, if not more, at El Barrio. The success with the planning development, the meetings that went, I'm open for questions. I know that parking was always the issue, but Five Points is kind of thriving right now, and there's a lot of new restaurants, the success of Donna Chang's, the Royal Peasant, Marker Seven, these are all wonderful establishments. I will say that with the 25 parking spots that we have at El Barrio, that is more parking than all three of those restaurants combined. So I'm open for questions too, so thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Parish. Anyone else wish to speak to this item? Okay, we'll come behind the rail, and this is in Allison's district, I believe.
It's, it's my pleasure to support the planning commission's recommendation, and I make a motion that we approve what's been recommended.
I'll second it.
Bill, would you read the ordinance?
An ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to rezoning a parcel of land comprising approximately .362 acres located at 1331 South Millich Avenue from CO Commercial Office to CNPD Commercial Neighborhood Plan Development and for other purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Parish. We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and now we go to item number 22, and this is a request of Williamson Associates for Athens Oconee School for, let me see. I want to look here to see what they're asking for it to be rezoned from. It's special use, 594 Oconee Street, that's what I was looking for, for 594 Oconee Street, and it's for a special use permit. And again, this is the time for public input on this item, anyone that would like to speak to it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Scott Haynes, I work for Williamson Associates, reside at 2081 Clock Filter Road, here on behalf of Oconee Street School LLC. It's been a real privilege to work on this project, such a historic, such a site with historic significance is, is kind of a rarity. I know there's been a lot of question of what might happen to this building over the last decade or so, and so we felt it was very fortunate to have someone step forward that was able to put a plan together through the use of historic tax credits to be able to save not only the schoolhouse, but both buildings on site. We're really excited about this project, we've already submitted construction drawings to staff, those are under review right now, we've already completed interior demolition to remove many of the partition walls that were added over the years, the drop ceiling and so forth, and so work is, is already underway to try and get this building back, back into a historic condition. I will say it's worth noting that the interior elements and exterior elements of the building are going to be all subject to the review of National Park Service in terms of relevance to history. Park Service will not allow us to take out elements that aren't, that do not have historic significance. I'd like to thank staff for their assistance in this, this was a little bit of a tricky application to put together in order to utilize fully the available tax credits. Without that, this project just would not be possible. So thank you for that, and thank you for your time this evening. My client Wesley DeForre is here in the audience this evening, either of us would be more than happy to answer questions if you have them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming. Any, any further public input on this item? Okay, I jumped the gun a little bit, Allison. Did you read the ordinance for us, Bill?
Yes, there are two for this one.
Okay.
The first is an ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to amending the official future development map of Athens Clark County by changing the designation of an approximate 1.68 acre parcel of land located at 594 Oconee Street and for other purposes. The next is an ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to special use approval in the CG Commercial General and RM2A Mixed Density Residential Airport Overlay districts on the approximate 1.68 acre parcel of land located at 594 Oconee Street and for other purposes.
Thank you. And I called on you too early, because we're actually going to have to have four votes.
I had three, but you can help me out with.
The future development map, the consideration.
The variances.
Two variances and then the ordinance.
So do we do the variances together? I was following.
I think first is the, first is the amendment to the future development map.
Okay, but I do support, and this was the staff and the planning commission's recommendations together, which I think is pretty strong. So I'll make a motion that we amend with conditions, the future development map.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we get a second?
Any opposed?
What are the conditions?
The future development map?
Yeah.
There's no conditions on the future development map.
Is that the government corridor business, government to corridor business and community center? And I think there's two parcels, and they each have a different zone, and we're getting up to the same zone. Is that right, Brad? Help me out.
The issue, the reason the report appeared to have a condition is that the applicant requested a future development designation. We recommended one that was more appropriate, in our opinion, didn't change anything else about it. So, our condition in the report was to approve the change with the condition that it be the, I forgot which one we went to, but residential mixed use, or it was...
Corridor Business and Community Center Mixed Use.
The motion is to change it to residential mixed use.
To residential mixed use. And that's why the ordinance, that's, so it's really not a condition any longer. The ordinance reflects the change. We listed it as a condition in the report, though.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
We good?
Okay. We have a motion, and did we have a second?
Second.
Motion second.
Can I ask?
Sure.
Motion to amend the motion to take out the word "with" conditions.
Oh. Is that not part of it from the general report?
Is that a problem, Bill, or...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what the suggestion from Commissioner Neesmith was.
Well, Allison had said with conditions, and I think conditions were mentioned in the report, and now she's been asked to take that out of her motion.
The motion is to change it to residential mixed use and future development map.
I still don't understand.
I was just, I was going by, listed on 22, the Planning Commission recommendation, and it was the future development map to approval with conditions. Is that not the current recommendation? I thought it was staff, too.
I don't have a copy of the ordinance with me for the future development map. If the ordinance says residential mixed use, then there's no condition any longer.
It says government to corridor business and community center mixed use.
Brian, here's the copy.
And then the special use is commercial general.
So, there's no, there are no conditions in the ordinance.
Let's give Bill seconds to give us his, I mean, Brad, to give us his opinion.
Okay. So, I would make, amend my...
Allison, if you would, just wait a second. Brad's checking ordinance to see what's the most appropriate wording.
This was the sounding board.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that was...
We get there, you play.
That's right.
Okay.
I guess I was going to amend it to approve what was in the ordinance, that Bill read. I was just going to get...
But this is future development map ordinance. Okay. Okay.
Okay. So, I'll amend it to, for my motion to amend the future development map to match the ordinance that you...
As recommended.
As recommended. As recommended by the staff and Planning Commission.
Is that okay, Mr. Neesmith?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the next, the next is the consideration...
Of the variances, so...
Well, I think we need to do them separately, yeah.
So, I make a motion that we approve variance number one.
And that's the parking variance.
Parking variance. We have a second.
Have motion second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And now I make a motion that we approve variance number two.
Which is the buffer.
Buffer.
Yeah.
Second.
Have motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
And now, and now, the final vote will be to approve the special use.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're going to get a nice new restaurant, so, great.
Mayor Denson?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Warren tapped me on the shoulder and said that he didn't think that there was a vote taken on the future development map change for the Quick Trip.
Yeah, it was.
Okay.
That was before I talked.
We got you covered, Jim. Okay. We have, we have one more item, and it's a bill to, excuse me, an amendment referencing personal care homes. Anyone would like to comment on that, this would be the time. Okay, seeing none, we'll come behind the rail, and will you read the ordinance for us, Bill?
An ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to zoning and development standards and for other purposes.
We have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the changes. I'll second, and I'd like to comment. This is, we know that there are personal care homes operating in our town that do not have special use permits, and so, once this gets done, they better go get them. Just give them a warning, they need to go get them, special use permits. So, I second.
Have motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and now we're down to our last item, and that's a public hearing and deliberation on the abandonment of Albert Street. If anyone wishes to speak to this item? Oh, I thought you were coming to speak. Okay, we'll come behind the rail. Is there any, would anyone like to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, I so moved, being in District Two, that we follow the recommendation for abandonment.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. I want to make sure that, okay, I had a note here to myself, I just want to make sure whether there were any problems or not. We have motion second. Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So, this is the last opportunity for citizen input, and this is the time that you can have three minutes at the mic to tell us, to talk to us about anything you want us to hear about, so.
My name is Robert Foster, and I live at 350 Forest Drive in Athens, Georgia. I'm coming as the vice chair of the Athens Immigrant Rights Coalition Steering Committee here in Athens, Georgia. I'm here to notify you all about a recent change in the sheriff's cooperation with ICE officers and to speak against this policy, reading a statement that has been voted on, shall we say, and recommended by all of the members of our coalition. First of all, while ICE officers purport to make communities safe, the reality of their work in our community is very different. Just this weekend, they stopped an Athenian man who had left his neighborhood. As far as we know, the ICE agents had no warrant. The person was stopped under the mis suspicion of not having legal status. We like to call this racial profiling. The man did not violate any driving laws, did not commit any other crime other than being here without presumably protected legal status, and the U.S. legal system denies him an opportunity for obtaining a legal status. And now he sits in a detention center because of these officers. An innocent Athenian may be in jail for months and may be expelled from his home. Young children are living in the trauma of having their parents ripped away, a wife that has lost their husband in the blink of an eye, and often the persons who are arrested in these cases are the major breadwinner for these households, and so they need further community support to actually pay their bills. These officers have caused durable damage to our community. This is the reality of ICE officers in our community. These are the very officers that the sheriff's office has now formally agreed to cooperate with. And so, I'm here for two reasons. One is to make a formal statement to speak out against the sheriff's cooperation with the agency that does this immoral work. And two, to urge this commission to push and create policies that forward the values of your citizens, because in the absence of legal reforms that provide a way forward at the federal and state levels, we must act to protect our community members. Therefore, the Athens Immigrant Rights Coalition urges the commission to create policies that prohibit the policing of our community members by their immigration status, including policies against the kind of profiling that led to this recent arrest. Concretely, Athens can pass policies that require ICE to present judicially issued warrants authorizing detention in order to hold a person. We also need to declare that law enforcement will not arrest, detain, extend detention of, or transfer custody on the basis of immigration detainer or administrative immigration warrant. This will protect our community from officers who want to inspect or detain Athenians simply because they suspect they do not belong. Hundreds of ACC residents and their allies are counting on you to have the political will to enact these policies and follow those that are in like form in Decatur, Clarkston, Atlanta, and we are glad to provide you those forms of policies from those other counties if that would be helpful. We live in a community that wants all of our residents, regardless of immigration and status, to feel free and secured and to be able to call law enforcement authorities when needed. As long as the sheriff continues to cooperate with ICE in this manner, we feel that that's a detriment to these community members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Now, I would, I would ask you please to not demonstrate, because we have a number of people waiting to speak.
Good evening. My name is Leanne Purdom. I'm at 455 Scott Street.
What's your last name, Leanne?
Purdom.
Would you spell it for me?
Sure. P-U-R-D-U-M.
Okay.
And it's L-E-A-N-N-E. Thank you. And I'm here as, also as a member of the Athens Immigrant Rights Coalition to continue telling you a bit about the meeting that we had with the sheriff yesterday. The sheriff began by his, he began his explanation of why he chose to change his policy to cooperate with ICE by repeating harmful and unfounded rhetoric we've all heard before, which is that immigrants are potential terrorists. My colleagues and I were flabbergasted to hear this position from the sheriff, especially considering the many kinds of violence and hate that are front and center in our society that don't have anything to do with immigration. The AIRC and Athens for everyone met with the sheriff to ask him to protect our neighbors from family separation, removal from their community, and detention, and unfortunately, the sheriff revealed a lack of knowledge about the reality of immigration policing in our community. My doctoral and volunteer work focus on immigration policy and detention centers. ICE officers, as we just heard, do not go after the most dangerous people. These are officers who every day take children from their parents and rip people away from their communities and everything they know. As we know, under current U.S. law, there is no legal pathway for undocumented people. They can't just get papers. But still, the goal of ICE is to deport 100% of these people who do not have legal status regardless of crime or community connections. The stories I could tell you are endless of what I've seen, including a woman who was, who was dying of brain cancer, and we had to pressure ICE officers to let her out of a detention center. And ICE officers do not protect the community. What they do is police immigration status. Cooperating with them means adding an additional life-altering consequence on top of the existing legal system. Now, as the meeting with the sheriff went on, we were able to share these concerns and communicate the reality of ICE policing. However, eventually, the sheriff said, okay, I hear you, I understand that deportation rips families apart, I understand it is a huge consequence that applies only to those without legal status, but you know what? If you don't want that consequence, don't come to my jail. Now, I've had several conversations with the chief of police about immigration and about policing in general, and I know how hard he's worked to forward his view of community policing. I also know that this policy from the sheriff hurts the chief's efforts and couldn't be further away from the view of the police department. And frankly, I am here to say, this is my opinion, that for a public official in this county to express the views of law, justice, and policing like I heard from the sheriff, it is unacceptable. I know many people who are here who either are already mad or are going to be absolutely furious about his decision to work with ICE. So, no, it's not acceptable to say, yeah, I know ICE officers are going to cause a lot of pain and tear families apart and take members of our community away, but you know what? I'm going to do it because I can. We have a large community who is here, who is ready to organize, to bring attention to anyone who is willing to take that position about our fellow Athenians and are preparing to do so.
Leanne, I'm sorry you timed that.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Christopher Easton. I wanted to speak to you today about the...
Christopher, can you give us your address?
I live in multiple locations. It's not, I don't live in a single place, so I can't accurately do that. I do live in Athens, though. I would like to bring to your attention the fact that our county continues to host a GNAT's program called Rettland. There was a lawsuit two years ago, I think two years, about the state program from the Department of Justice alleging that it violates the Americans with Disabilities Act by unnecessarily segregating students with disabilities. Although that case could not be resolved and is currently facing an indefinite delay for compliance, that has not changed the definition of segregation. When students are placed in a separate education setting from the general public, that fits the definition of segregation. The DOJ case also alleges that black students have been disproportionately placed in this program. You, of course, do not respond to these public comments, but I'm asking you individually, each of you, the Congress commissioners and mayor, to discuss this with me so that we can work together to make a constructive statement acknowledging that this segregation exists and condemning segregation programs. The national and international Autistic Self Advocacy Network is opposed to the GNAT's program. This is not necessary, and there are other models that states use to comply with the ADA by successfully integrating students. I hope that you do not see taking a stance against segregation as a reasonable request. Thank you.
Christopher, and we don't normally respond, but I think your issue is a school board issue, which is a separate body from the mayor and commission.
Hello, Mayor and Commission. My name is Nathan Wasserman. I live at 200 Old Princeton Road. I'm a student at the University of Georgia. I'm studying music therapy. I plan to go around the world and be a healer. About two years ago, I was arrested for misdemeanor possession of marijuana on campus at UGA. I was taken to Clark County Jail that night, and I missed all my classes the next day. I'm fortunate enough to have kind, supportive, trusting, great parents who are willing to bail me out and give me a second chance at the path to enlightenment. They paid a lawyer to defend me in court, and he got me a deal with the pretrial diversion program that the county sponsors for first-time offenders that are under the age of 21 that have committed a nonviolent crime. I am really privileged, and I am, I admit that fully, you know. It cost my family about $6,500 to get me back on track, and there's others in our community that really, really, really can't take that kind of financial stress. They, they, they can't stand up for themselves in court when this, when this kind of thing happens to them if they are arrested for possession of a plant. And they're, they're forced to pay into a system that continues to drag the poor further into poverty. When you are not free to express yourself, your identity is effectively suppressed, and when your identity is suppressed, you lose a vast amount of the human experience. The path to enlightenment involves letting go of your material ego, of your own volition. I would venture that you can't be free if your identity is forcibly stripped from you. The drug war in the United States, in Georgia, in Athens forcibly strips people of their identity and is racially charged to target minorities. And I'll get off the philosophy train and hit you with some statistics. In Athens, you are three times, 3.7 times more likely to be arrested for misdemeanor marijuana if you're black versus if you're white. In Athens, we have a prestigious institution of higher education that is committed to teaching people about the world and helping them with their, with their issues. In Athens, we have a monument downtown that is honoring Confederate soldiers, and it was built by the Ku Klux Klan. The drug war and the monument are related because they both contribute to the suppression of the identity of minority people in our community.
Mr. Wasserman, I'm sorry you timed that.
That's okay. Thank you. I think I made my point.
Hi, my name's Janice Yoon. I live at 385 River Road.
I'm sorry, Janice, I didn't understand your last name.
Janice Yoon, Y-O-O-N. I'm here to talk about the same issue. As you all know, Atlanta and Clarkston and other cities and counties have, across the nation, have passed parallel ordinance, decriminalizing, you know, misdemeanor possession. I just want to highlight the fact that at this point, 64% of Americans support cannabis legalization. That is the highest number in the history of the United States. 61%, or 51% of Republicans support cannabis legalization across the nation, and I know that many of you are not, you know, as progressive as a lot of us are, but to reflect your constituency, I think it's important to look at these numbers. And the statistic that was mentioned before, actually 4.7, or African-Americans are 4.7 times as likely to be arrested for cannabis-related crimes than white people, and I think that that is an outrageous number. As we all know, in Athens... As we all know, in Athens, poverty, homelessness hits minority communities way harder than any other communities. And I think if you follow the numbers, follow the money, we're spending a lot of our money, you know, arresting people for nonviolent drug crimes, putting them in jails, using our taxpayer money to continue to, you know, keep these people in jail for crimes that are not actually hurting anybody else. We could be spending our money and our time a lot more effectively. And I think that we should follow Atlanta and these other places in passing a parallel ordinance. Yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Yoon.
My name is Eleanor Davis. I live at 117 Lenore Avenue. And I'm here today, Madam Mayor, Commission, because I'm concerned that the sheriff's department's choice to cooperate with ICE makes all of Athens less safe. It's very important to me that all members of my community feel able to call local law enforcement when they are victims of a crime or know about criminal activity. The sheriff department's cooperation with ICE means that being in the Clark County jails for any reason, no matter how small, can result in deportation for many immigrants here in Athens. Even forgetting to pay a traffic ticket could mean a life destroyed and a family torn apart. This is both wrong and unjust, but I'm also worried that having such a breathtakingly huge punishment for any infraction, no matter how small, will have a chilling effect on the bond of trust local law enforcement needs to have with their community. I'm worried vulnerable Athenians will feel too scared to call for help when they need it most. I'm grateful that the Athens-Clark County Police Department has chosen not to cooperate with ICE. Chief Freeman knows it would keep him from doing his job and ferving the people of Athens. I hope you all, Madam Mayor and commissioners, will speak to the sheriff's department and help them see that this is a very big mistake. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Hey, Katie Orton. I'm at 145 Mel Street. I'm here today as a representative of Athens for Everyone. I'm here to read a statement that we wrote based on this past week when the people of Athens-Clark County learned that our sheriff's department was secretly working with the Immigration and Customs Enforcement, ICE, to deport Athenians. For years, our sheriff's department in Athens has chosen not to comply with ICE detainee requests because they are unconstitutional and erode trust in local law enforcement. Yet, in July of this year, they quietly began to work with ICE again, breaking promises made to the immigrant community and their allies here in Athens. Athens for Everyone and their allies are deeply grieved and upset by this situation. Athens has benefited so much from immigrants who live here. With or without documentation, immigrants are our friends, neighbors, coworkers. They are fathers and mothers, husbands and wives. They are us. They are Athenians, and this is their home. ICE destroys lives and rips apart families. I know this has been said. It's true. They often deport immigrants for nothing more than extremely minor infractions, such as traffic violations. It's been said over and over again. The Athens-Clark County Police Department knows that our community is mixed status, and they have chosen, along with local law enforcement agencies all over the country, to not cooperate with ICE. And we applaud that decision. Yesterday, members of Athens for Everyone and the Athens Immigrants Rights Coalition and community met with Sheriff Ira Edwards to find out why his department has chosen to work with ICE and to ask him to return to his previous policy of noncooperation. In Sheriff Edwards' response, we were disheartened to hear echoes of the false and dangerous anti-immigrant rhetoric of the Trump administration. In reality, there is zero evidence that the immigrant community in Athens is dangerous. In fact, immigrants across America are less likely to commit violent crimes than native-born citizens. We reminded the sheriff about the fact that holding anyone without due process is illegal under the Constitution and opens Clark County up to costly lawsuits. We reminded him that working with ICE erodes community trust in local law enforcement, is making Athens less safe. And we spoke about the lives and families destroyed. Despite this, the sheriff's department has not yet shown the courage to change course. Athens for Everyone is asking our 1,100 members to ask the sheriff's department to reverse their policy of working with ICE. We hope to show them that they have a moral duty and the community's support and the constitutional imperative to do so. We urge the mayor and our commissioners, as our elected representatives and leaders in the community, to reach out to the sheriff's department and do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Orton.
Hi, my name is Bettina Kaplan, K-A-P-L-A-N. I live in 130 Hope Avenue. I'm also a member of Athens Immigrant Rights Coalition, and I also work with immigrant children and children of immigrants in a project called You Lead Athens. We help them gain access to higher education. I'm here today just to join my voice to the rest of the people who were requesting changing the policy that the sheriff is now acting. I'm, if you're as aware as I am about my accent, you will realize that I'm an immigrant myself. And I want to express how unsettling it is to live in a town where immigrants are qualified as criminals. I'm called criminals or terrorists. I see the fear in the eyes of the students who I work with every Thursday night, the terror that they have, that the parents or that their families will be torn apart. And that's why I want to request to you that you urge the sheriff's office to change the policy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. Broderick Flanagan, 215 Gressom Street. I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but I do want to stand with the Immigration Rights Coalition in suggesting that the sheriff's office reverse the policy dealing with the illegal immigrants. I feel like, I mean, I was moved to speak when I heard the story about the, or the portion of the statement about profiling. I know this is kind of off-subject, but I too myself have been profiled here in Athens-Clark County. Last year, in a six-month span, I was pulled over five times. And one of those times, I was pulled over by an officer for something that wasn't even illegal. I was talking on my cellphone as I was driving, as I was leaving my place of business on the Triangle Plaza, or the Iron Triangle, as some refer to it as. And he pulled me over and proceeded to ask me questions about where I was coming from, what I was doing, you know, and proceeded to shine a light through my car, you know, trying to escalate the situation, and I guess looked for something to write me a citation on. Long story short, another officer came up and recognized me from an event I organized, helped to organize with Chief Freeman and some UGA professors called Blue and U. And, you know, I wasn't, I didn't receive a citation or anything that night, but I did file a formal complaint later. And then to see Chief Freeman, you know, giving praise to the same officer that profiled me later at a presentation at the planning department, you know, it just kind of drove the dagger in a little bit further. He gave the officer praise, and I did, like I said, file a formal complaint. But I was supposed to follow up with an interview and view the body cameras and all that, but that did not take place. So, I do understand how profiling affects people, you know, from my personal experience, even though I didn't get detained or sent to the ICE organization. So, I know how, what that process looks like. So, if there's anything you can do to support that warrant piece of that policy, please do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flanagan.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. Tim Denson, 43 Quillwood Drive. I also didn't plan on speaking, but I definitely want to add my voice to the Athens Immigrant Rights Coalition and Athens for Everyone members here who have asked for the Clark County Sheriff's Department to no longer comply with ICE detainers, which, of course, was our policy for three years. When I was able to speak with Sheriff Edwards and staff yesterday, the thing I asked first was, "Why was this changed?" We had this for three years. Things seem to be working. What led to the change? And did not really get a clear answer. I encourage all of y'all to please ask that question also and ask what benefit we are getting from it. Because I think a lot of people outlined the costs that are there. You know, another one that didn't even come up was the fact that our tax dollars go to pay for the extra 48 hours those people are kept in there. We're not being reimbursed for that. That's coming from, my tax dollars coming from everyone's tax dollars here in this county. But the biggest thing here is definitely the more argument of how it destroys families, how it breaks up communities, and we need to be treating these people for what they are, which is our neighbors and our friends and our coworkers. And we need to stand with them. So, please, please encourage. I know this is not in your jurisdiction. But I encourage you to talk to Sheriff Edwards and his staff and ask him to go back to the policy we had in place before. And just to point out and clarify, these are not warrants. They, you might hear, like, the ICE detainers are warrants. They are not warrants. They are not signed by a judge. I encourage y'all to go home tonight, actually pull up the Homeland Security documents. You can look at the detainee. You can actually look at the form. On the form, it says multiple times, "This is a request." It is a request. And I think it's a request that we should deny. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Denson. Anyone else? Okay, we'll come back behind the rail, and now's our time for all of us to have a few minutes. And the first item I have is to report out on the members of the Athens-Clark County Facilities Authority. And our members are, terms are about to expire, and this is basically a financing vehicle that's been used by, I believe, hospitals, universities, various things in our community. And it's very seldom used, but we have to have a full slate of people available. So, I'm reappointing Jerry Neesmith to a term that will end 12/31/18. Didn't have a chance to ask Mr. Hamby if he was willing to serve, but...
As long as it doesn't mean they'll be late, too.
So, I'm appointing to him, him to the same term, well, end 12/31/18. Jared Bailey, 12/31/19. Harry Sims, 12/31/20. Melissa Link, 12/31/20. And that's a motion. I would like, or it's a recommendation. I'd like a motion.
Motion for those names to be forwarded as facilities members.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, and then I have a couple of assignments for our committees. I'm going to sign LRC to review the food truck ordinance. If y'all recall, when we had that discussion a year or so ago, I did promise that we would look at it again in a year to see how it's working. And we've had a request from one of our vendors that we look at it again. So, I'm going to ask LRC to take a look at that. And to GOC, I'd like you to develop a recommendation, develop and recommend a policy for acquisition of private streets. And now, Mr. Williams, have you got anything for us? Mr. Fairman?
Oh, ma'am.
Ms. Maddox?
Not tonight.
Okay. Ms. Link, we'll start with you for your...
First of all, I want to point out that we approved a really cool redevelopment of an old historic school building. And that is only possible thanks to the historic tax credit, which is proposed to be repealed in the bill that is being reconciled between the House and Senate. From what I understand, the House bill repeals it. The Senate bill modifies it somewhat. So, I just want to remind folks to call your congresspeople and encourage them to make sure they hold up the historic tax credits and also to change a whole lot of other things in that bill. I also want to address the sheriff's department and what's going on with the detention of immigrants in our community. We live in a community where 73% of the citizens in Athens-Clark County did not vote for Donald Trump. I think it's very, very clear that the values of our community are not in line with the hateful, bigoted nationalist rhetoric that has become the norm in the White House and in Congress and often even under the gold dome in Atlanta. The values of that administration are not the values of the majority of the people in Athens-Clark County. And it's deeply, deeply disturbing to me that we have a sheriff's department that is buying into this rhetoric and this false narrative and is endangering people in our community, endangering our friends, our neighbors, breaking up families. And I want people to consider not just the impact on immigrant families, but on children. Because those children of those broken families go to school with all the other children in this community, in our community. And children from perfectly stable, middle-class families, non-immigrant families, are coming home to their parents and asking their parents, "Will the police come and take you away?" They're coming home singing nursery rhymes about ICE coming to the door and hauling daddy off. Nursery rhymes in Spanish that they learn from their classmates. This is not just a problem in one certain aspect of our community. This has a domino effect on our entire community, and it is unacceptable that it's going on here in Athens-Clark County.
Gertz?
Nothing, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Sims?
I'd like to reintroduce, since we have a policy now on naming of facilities and parks by the name of Virginia Walker for the Trail Creek Park.
Well, I'll give that to our committee. Well, I'm not sure that's what we have to do now. We just need to look at the policy.
Look at the policy, yeah. Just look at the policy and see if it fits.
Look at that.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a point of saying that I am deeply saddened by the passing of the former occupant, probably the longest occupant in the seat, Commissioner Carter, who passed away November 16th. As many of you guys know, he didn't say a lot, but when he did say stuff, it was, it had a lot of impact. And he was 93, I think, years old, so he had a good, long life. And he contributed a lot. He made a lot of changes in Athens-Clark County for the better. I worked under him as a staff member when we were developing the Waste Reduction Program here in Clark County, and he was an integral member, a part of that, helped support the citizen committee that is still in existence from Unification that supported that program. And he's going to be missed, but he left a really good legacy and a good mark on this community, his hometown, too. Also, just point out that we're 10 days away from the submittal of a $750,000 grant for small community air service development at our airport. Pretty excited about it. We've gotten support letters, obviously, the mayor and commission's support, letters from our congressman and our state, and our state congress, our state senators and representatives. And then a whole bunch of businesses are also supporting. And we do have letters of intent from two potential airline partners, so we're pretty excited about it. So, just stay tuned.
Thank you, Ms. Dickerson. Thank you. Ms. Bell?
Looking forward to a parade on Thursday night, and it's going to be cold rather than bright.
Yeah, wrap up.
Yes, wrap up. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I just want to sort of piggyback on Commissioner Dickerson's thoughts that she had to say about Commissioner Carter, who was a very nice person, very good commissioner. And I think the best advice he gave me is, one time I asked him, "Did he read all the stuff that, all these agenda reports and all this other stuff that was put before him?" And his response was, "Well, why do I need to do that if I know I'm going to vote no?" So, I might start voting no more often now. But thank you.
Mike, I think I could probably tell you that he did.
Oh, I know he did. Yeah, you could tell he did at the meetings. You certainly could. Yeah.
Ms. Neesmith? Mr. Bailey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Don't have anything very specific, except that I want to say that I appreciate the help that we get from the clerk of the commission and all the staff support we get when we've got a constituent issue, be it for solid waste or for transportation, public works, stormwater folks. We get a lot of support. It makes us look pretty good. But it first goes through the clerk of the commission, and I want to thank all those staff people, including the clerk.
Thank you. And I will tell y'all real quickly that I have had lots of compliments from the community on the Olympic up after the storm. So, that's a tough one when you've got a lot of excess and extras. Ms. Ryan?
I don't have much to say because I left half of my voice in the stadium on Saturday night. I did my part. I took being the 12th man very seriously. Very proud of our team and the individual recognitions that are coming to our coach of the football team. of the football team, as well as the other members, and proud of them. And at that point, I'll say, make a motion adjourn. And go into executive session. Make a motion, we go into executive session.
So, if our visitors will excuse us, we have to have an executive session.
Do we need to vote? We need a second. All in favor?
We need to do that. It's two separate things.
Two separate things. First, we need to adjourn. I make a motion, we adjourn.
Adjourn.
Second.
Motion, go into executive session.
We need to vote on the adjourn.
Okay. I thought I heard everybody say yes. Adjourn.
Aye. And I make a motion, we go into executive session.
Second.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
And if you all will excuse us, we need to...